Hello and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, October 3rd. Can you believe that? October already. Beautiful Michigan fall day. And this is our meeting where we delve into generally specific topics. And we start at five. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask Clerk Borling to please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez. Commissioner Prado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you Clerk Borling. Manager Rizma, do we have any communication?
None, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Now is the opportunity for public comments for our committee of the whole meeting. At the committee of the whole, the public comment time is limited to two minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. And is there anyone in the chambers? Let's make sure we have that phone number out there. DCM Chamberlain, what will be our phone number for calling?
Sure, that telephone number for calling is 888-382-9556.
Thank you Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. So now would be the time to call in if you want to make comments by phone. For those of you in the chamber, please come up.
I'm wearing blue in honor of national anti-bullying. And I want to let everyone know that that's not just for, as my son would say, social justice warriors or snowflakes. Some effects of bullying are depression, gang activity, people have quit work because of a hostile work environment, I've done that myself, physical and mental health problems, decreased productivity for the employees that are at work, absenteeism at work, and the worst thing, suicide. So bullying is something that should be taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to make a comment for the committee of the whole meeting? See no one. DCM Chamberlain, is there anybody who's called in?
We'll go ahead and check. Go ahead, you're live with the City Commission caller, ending in 0411.
Go ahead, you're live with the City Commission caller.
Caller, go ahead, you're with the City Commission.
I'm a city resident in the South Town neighborhood, still trying to have our neighborhood recognized by the city commissioners. I wanted to say thank you to the Foundation for Excellence for adding closed captioning to their meetings. It sets a good example to the City Commission to accept disability inclusion as part of the future. Perhaps you will add it as requested to the 2025 master plan. I continue to ask for disability inclusion at the city level as a priority equal to race and gender. I recently saw a video on YouTube where a city assistant city manager was bullying a person known to have a visible disability. And quite frankly, I was appalled. And I think that needs to be addressed at a city level, maybe not in this forum, but you need to take neurodiversity equal to physical disabilities. And I think your ableist systemic discrimination needs to come to an end and accept disability inclusion equal to race and gender. Thank you.
That was the last call.
Thank you Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. I wanted to thank everyone who took the time and made the effort to provide comments during our public comment session. And we are now on to the work of this session, Manager Rizma.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are having a, one of several series in our Foundation for Excellence's fifth year anniversary. And tonight, we're going to be looking at affordable housing and housing development and the Housing Development Fund that the Foundation for Excellence has created and funded. So with that, I'd like to call forward our Community Planning Economic Development Director, Antonio Mitchell. Welcome, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As stated by the city manager, we'll be talking about housing development for the city of Kalamazoo, and the focus is going to be Foundation for Excellence dollars. There is other development projects that are happening in the city, throughout the city, that we plan to share more information on with hopefully a map later on this year. So you can see all the development projects that are happening beyond dollars that we are utilizing from Foundation for Excellence. And hopefully, that will spur your interest, and we'll have another meeting to discuss all those projects that are not being funded by dollars that fit this program. Right now, I'm going to start the presentation, and hopefully my staff person will be here to assist me with finishing it. We have one guest that's going to be attending to give a little more feedback on LIS participation and their dollars and what they do to assist us with a lot of our housing development projects. So we'll be covering those areas, and they'll be able to answer any questions that you may have going forth for that type of development initiatives. So, so the goal with our programming with the dollars that we're utilizing is build strong, equitable neighborhoods with markets that benefit all. What we're trying to do with these dollars is open up the opportunity for residents to have housing that wouldn't have housing opportunities in the regular market. We're trying to leverage our dollars that we're getting from Foundation for Excellence to hit and reserve properties, hopefully through working through the land bank and working through KNHS and other nonprofit organizations, Habitat for Humanity, to assist us in filling our infill housing needs at a rate that will hopefully bring more stabilization to a lot of blanked vacant properties we have on the city. To preserve, as I said, affordable housing and residential opportunities, and hopefully with that component, it fits into Imagine Kalamazoo Neighborhood Plan. As we've been talking about a lot from Community Planning Economic Development, we try to stick to the Imagine Kalamazoo Initiative and try to hold our staff and our implementation of housing economic development to fit those parameters, to give opportunities where there were not opportunities before. So preserving existing housing stock is very important to us to try to create programming that assists individuals that have existing housing that fit into eligible criteria that we may have for working with seniors to assist them to hopefully do improvements to their housing. One thing we're finding out is that a number of seniors in the community are pretty much, they have more house than they need. Their family has no left, their family is moved out the community, but they're still in the neighborhood. But they don't have the resources or the capacity to reinvest into their housing stock. And so we've been working to create programming to assist in that process as well. So beyond just, like we said, affordable housing, we focus on workforce housing, we also focus on market rate housing. One of our main missions is to create as much diversity as possible in our housing stock. We're trying to, as they say, expand the capacity of some of our organizations to assist with not only just providing just affordable housing, but senior affordable housing as well. We have a couple faith-based organizations that we'll be working with, that you'll hear more about, that assisting us with creating more affordable senior housing to assist us really with some of the population I spoke about that have grown out of their quote-unquote "housing" that they have, but want to stay in the neighborhood, but need to have something that's more affordable and more manageable to assist them. So, in this process of trying to create balance is pretty much this act by us to try to keep a healthy market and building, hopefully, or preserving the housing stock in the residents that live in the neighborhood. So we're trying to, as they say, identify not only what quote-unquote lots are available through like land bank and working with even existing property owners, but also trying to work with some of the associations, the neighborhood associations, in educating the community on the opportunities that we have to assist them to be homeowners. This comes with relationships with East Side Neighborhood Association, Edison Neighborhood Association, and North Side Neighborhood Association, pretty much our three SBK neighborhoods. In this process of working with them, we have identified other possible, as they say, mixed-use development possibilities and development. Edison Neighborhood over in the Washington Square area built a mixed, not built, but remodeled, a mixed-use development property there that's not talked about a lot, but is very viable to that neighborhood across the street from the Family Dollar. Used to have a barber shop on the first floor. If you go through that area and look, you'll see it's been remodeled, redone. They're going to be utilizing the commercial space and creating affordable housing on the second floor. So hopefully, that would not be our first relationship of development with them. We're working with, of course, the North Side Association on some development projects with them. We've been working with East Side Neighborhood Association on pretty much repair program, working with existing homeowners for assisting them with remodeling and fixing houses to assist them to now sustain where they live at, but make it safe and ADA accessible as necessary. So, if everyone recognized this, this is the old Knights Inn. That's going to be affordable housing resident development project. Hopefully, later this month, we'll be having a ribbon cutting to celebrate this location that's going to provide affordable housing in the community and also show what is possible when a number of organizations working with local government can work together to create pretty much not only just affordable housing, but hopefully affordable housing for long term. This will provide housing that will assist with transitioning individuals to hopefully some of our new housing stock that we're working on, and also work with, hopefully breaking down some barriers for individuals that may have some credit or other issues in their background that they need assistance with, that we can then transition, not in our housing, but their own housing in the community as well. So, our infill initiative is single-family housing. Hopefully, you're seeing signs like this throughout the city in our Pacific neighborhoods. This is in, I'm pretty sure it's in Edison Neighborhood. And this is a single-family housing development that we're working with our, one of our local neighborhood assoc-, not neighborhood association, but nonprofit organizations to assist us in infill housing. We have a number of projects that we've been working with, not only single-family housing, but also energy efficient, with electricity savings initiative implants, so that not only individuals have, as they say, affordable housing, but their utility costs and cost of living is sustained that's affordable as well. Mixed-use development, as you see, this is the Creamery project on Portage Avenue in Edison Neighborhood. This was a significant project because this was an old manufacturing site. It's called a Creamery for a reason. It used to be Creamery Manufacturing Company that was there. Next door to this is a company called BioClean. BioClean, a lot of people don't know the history of that company, started here in Kalamazoo. I assisted them in that, being in that location 20 years ago with city economic development funds from our Volun Loan Fund. And they have been thriving. So why, people like, why are they still there? They literally started there. They started in just a garage section of the old Creamery, and they have grown to, as you can see, have their own building in this location. They are sufficient to a young growing company here and growing in a spot that allowed us to develop the rest of the land into this mixed-use development project that has commercial space in it, has a daycare that has the YWCA partnering with them. We're working hopefully in the future to expand the YWCA's daycare program in other neighborhoods for other development projects that we're working on right now as collaboration. And this project showed the efficiency of our community working with a number of nonprofits, including the developer, to assist in the development that hopefully is an example we can utilize throughout other neighborhoods in the city as well. So homeownership, as I've been stating, one of the priorities for our division is creating the opportunity for homeownership. In this case, this is housing over in the East Side Neighborhood. These are considered probably tiny houses. We have another phase of tiny houses that's going on the north side. It's going to be on the corner of North Street and Westnich. We've pretty much worked with them to identify funding and development for the opportunity to create hopefully some ownership of transitional housing that can be, like I say, scaled up over time with those individuals. But we want to make sure we give individuals hopefully opportunities to not only have some ownership, but be able to be in a position to transition from that position of, as they say, smaller tiny house ownership to much larger, hopefully, single-family housing if necessary. Housing repair program, as we talked about, one of the things we're trying to do is assist individuals that live in existing housing, have ownership with stabilizing their housing that they have. One of the key components is individuals, as I stated, you have seniors that don't have the budgeting capability to make improvements. This is one of those improvement examples of before and after of our housing repair program to assist, in this case, helping someone bring in their electrical box system up to ninety code, but hopefully prevent any safety fire concerns that could have happened without our assistance. So some of our funding has gone into projects similar to this and projects like this. As you can see, redoing pretty much the stairwell area and repairing a new railing and carpet and flooring to assist this household with utilizing quote-unquote better safety access to their second floor. We've also done ADA accessible access to houses and things like that, working with seniors. We've done other improvements as well, which I think is further down in the slides, of housing repair on the outside as well, with repaint and things like that, we'll get to. But as you can see here, the main component here is bringing up the quality of life of individuals in the community by assisting them with not a lot of dollars, with dollars that make a difference. This is not a major quote-unquote funding initiative by our department, by our programming, but it makes a difference for this homeowner. It helps them feel safe, it helps them feel that they can still live in their house and be productive in their transition of being able to go up and down the stairs and have their correct railing to keep their family members safe. So what this is, is from 2019 to 2022, we've been involved with 378 units. As you can see, owner octp, preservation, 90 units, multifamily new construction, 234 units, new single-family, 28 units, and multifamily rehab, 26 units. One of the things that's consistent when you're trying to do housing development, in our case, where you're trying to create affordable housing for a large number of individuals in our community, is that we're going to have a number of multifamily units that are being developed over the next couple of years. We don't have, as I say, as I tell people, gobs of land to work with, but we do have enough quote-unquote spaces in the city that we can have more mixed-use development, as you saw earlier with the Creamery, that provides hopefully not only affordable housing, but some market rate housing mix there that assists individuals to get more quote-unquote stabilized in their transition to more affordable housing. As you can see on here, it's new single-family housing, it's only 28 units. So the issue that I bring up a lot, even with our staff and with individuals that actually, you know, wire and housing coming a lot faster, it takes, you know, sorry to say, you know, 12 to 18 months to get a single-family housing project developed because of all the funding layers of resources that we have to pull together. It's not just traditional banking that is involved with creating affordable housing. The other issue on the single-family housing is, which is always interesting to me, is that the same timeframe it takes to do a single-family house, it could take the same timeframe for a multifamily duplex to be developed, which is always interesting to me with the process of development in the community development side. So we try to make sure we educate the community in the neighborhoods that once you see a sign go up on a lot, doesn't mean construction's starting right away. It's going to take a little time to identify not only the funding, but also the framework of if there needs to be cleanup on these sites as well. One thing we're trying to incorporate is getting our brownfield authority involved with our single-family housing development. And you say, what's the need for that? A number of years ago, early 1990s, the federal government provided a lot of dollars to assist with demolition. In that process of providing dollars, they knocked, pretty much, and I was involved with that, in this case in Ben Harbor, pretty much knocked the houses right into the basement, smashed it down, covered up with dirt. Number of those sites are probably still prevalent. I know in Ben Harbor they are, and I'm pretty sure there's a number of sites here that have more than just dirt underneath the grass. So we've been working with our brownfield authority to assist us with identifying different vices of dollars to assist us with that process. If we run into any issues, assist our nonprofits with site preparation and cleanup if necessary so quote-unquote the affordable single housing developments can happen. We have a number of slots throughout the city. We are focusing on those lots to try to redevelop, but we have to be cautious and pretty much prepared to deal with what issues that might come up with the site that's not just a simple So partnering with development. So as I stated, it takes a number of months to get to that long-term affordable housing development. These would be the steps of concept. You have to look at a site, work with our local nonprofit developers, say, is this the right site? Does it fit the requirements of the city? Does it fit the requirements of the program? And then you go into, is it feasible? You know, does it work economically? One thing that, like we just stated earlier, or I stated earlier, is that this is not a regular banking project. This is a project that needs multiple tools of financing to assist this development that requires the city's involvement, the nonprofit's involvement, probably the bank, and maybe some other funding sources that we may tap into. So in that process, we call it stacking. So we have to stack those funds up on top of each other, make sure they line up to the endpoint of reaching construction. Once that is identified, then the construction preparation goes into effect. Depending on the site, there may be some other components that may require some additional attention. Some of the things that we've been dealing with is some infrastructure issues at some sites with water and sewer requirements, with tapping and other aspects that were cut off when the property was demoed and the property was vacated. So now there's some additional assistance that we have to bring to the table that in that stacking process may not have been identified. So before construction is started, we have to identify the other components or variables that may stand in the way for the development of that site. Then lease-up and management operation compliance is pretty much, that's a process identifying who's going into that property. So one thing, we have a good number of nonprofits that assist us in identifying the right applicants that can fit the programming for the housing that we're creating. And so they're creating pretty much a waiting list in preparing individuals to assist in this development of homeownership. And in that process, they're being managed by the nonprofits to not only be prepared to get into the house, but also financially educated on what it takes to keep the house. It's great to get people in a house, but we don't want people, as they say, getting over their head and not understanding the responsibility of being homeownership. And so we work with our nonprofits to assist in being the leaders in that process of education. So LIS, I'm going to ask Zach to run up, and he can introduce himself and what LIS is about and explain that process.
Mayor, Assistant, Senior Reverend, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. My name's Zach Bauer, and the Executive Director of LIS, here in Kalamazoo, and this is too close. So our mission is to partner to, and to create opportunities and great places to live. And we've been operating this community since 1988, and so we've been here a staple for a long time. We've distributed in debt, equity, and tax credits about 126 million as of this year in the community over that timeframe. And so that's principally been in two areas, debt, financing, and tax credit syndication with grant-making making up the end of that. And so Antonio thinks that I can do this on my own, but there we go, I can. Okay, so our work focuses in primarily three areas, and that's the leverage component that you probably hear a lot about, pre-development, financing, and grant-making, and then finally the technical assistance component. I'm going to take this out of order a little bit, but- I'm going to take this out of order a little bit, but so the leverage component is something that's probably asked the most about principally because the question is, how do I get grant money? And so, but it's a very small part of what we actually do. The largest two sections that we do is leveraging debt financing to amplify investments that are made by the city, by the county, or by a local philanthropy. And so we do that through a number of different ways. But like Antonio spoke to, there's a lot of time that goes into this, and the reason why that is is because no affordable housing project is the same. And so very oftentimes, we have to create a new lending product to fit with an equity stack or to make a low income tax credit deal work. And so Lisk lending is attractive to partners because we have flexibility in the capital that we use, and often we're the first in. So we take a lot of risk on the front end to ensure that a project moves forward. So that's the lending component that we do. Pre-development is something that we've had a long-term partnership with the city on that's particularly important for those larger kind of developments. And that is ensuring that a developer that's going to take on an affordable housing project isn't left with soft costs that are associated with getting that project off the ground. So that means doing a market study, ensuring, as Antonio has already mentioned, that there's no buried treasure in the lot, as we affectionately term it, and also if someone needs an attorney to get things going, or all those different soft costs that are associated with the pre-development phase. This is particularly important when we talk about resident developers. These are folks that are just getting started in this space, and so ensuring that we have a ready-made bench of people doing this work. We want to make sure that they can walk away from a project if it's not successful. And so what we do is if the project is successful, they repay that pre-development grant over five years at zero percent. If the project fails, it's forgiven. And so they walk away with no recourse. They can still talk to me at the grocery store when we see each other. It's not a big deal. We just let it go. We also reserve the right to forgive pre-development grants if the project is very aligned with our overall mission and our partner's mission. And so we have forgiven those in the past when a project has just hit on all wheels to get that going. And then finally, technical assistance. So this is three areas, and this is, you know, Antonio showed a timeline here, and it was very generous because I can tell you that some of our developers, particularly neighborhood developers, will start at the beginning and they'll be there for three years. One in particular comes to mind, and so that technical assistance helps a lot of things from everything from the program-related components to programmatic technical assistance. If you're doing something onsite, we can help you with that. If my staff can't, our national staff can. We have 38 locations throughout the United States, and then a robust national advisory committee that helps us as well. And then finally, we do a lot of organizational technical assistance as well, which is backed up with HUD Section 4 funding. And so HUD Section 4 is a federal program that provides much-needed grant dollars for 501(c)(3) capacity. So one of our most, two of our most important partners are in the room. And so, for example, we've awarded HUD Section 4 money to KNHS to help with foreclosure prevention by adding a staff person. We've, we've in the past provided it to community homeworks as well to help with certain capacity. So that's Lisk, and I will entertain questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll sit down and be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
So as you heard from Zach with Lisk, one thing we're trying to do is break down as many barriers to development and homeownership as possible. One of the things that we're looking at is gap financing. And what, we just talked about this stacking, it comes down to some individuals don't have enough funding to get into housing, so they need assistance with gap financing, which I think everyone knows about. If you're a homeowner, you have, you don't get all of the loan. Well, that's true as well for pretty much affordable housing development projects as well. And so we're working on pretty much having gap financing dollars through FFE to assist with closing the gaps for not only single-family housing, but hopefully multifamily development housing as well. Putting the, as they say, the projects together requires, as I spoke about early, multiple tools of financing. And what we're doing now is also positioning the city to be a part of being in the partnership of working with multi-development projects as well as single-family development projects with gap financing. And we're going to be utilizing the Foundation for Excellence dollars. Is there other dollars we could be using? The answer is yes. We could be using HUD, CDBG dollars, but that gets a little more complicated. By working with the Foundation for Excellence, it positions to structure the funding that best fits the developers, either a single-family developer of housing or a multifamily. So now we can adjust our structure of our financing that fits the market and create the incentive package that will help the project meet the needs of the developer, no matter if it's an individual or organization. So as you can see here, this is pretty much housing development. This is KNHS development. As I've been stating, this is really focused on affordable workforce and market rate housing. In this case with KNHS, it's focusing on affordable and workforce development housing. They are doing a spectacular job, as was our other housing development nonprofits, into creating those nice little starter homes for our families here in the community that are making a difference with some infill development. We're hopefully creating a more healthy market with creating diversity in our housing stock here in Kalamazoo that not only, as I say, market rate housing is being developed and market rate development projects are happening, but we're creating affordable housing, as I say, tools and programming that fills in a number of our lots in the city of Kalamazoo. One thing we will probably share with this commission is we're working on the map right now to show our vacant lots that are developable so that you'll know what quote unquote is not only in the community, but the lots that we're trying to focus on, in particular the number of our neighborhoods with infill housing. So this was, I was talking about earlier with repair program. This is a before and after picture. So really assisting individuals to have an impact, not only interiorly, as was shown earlier in one of the bullet points, but also exterior. As you can see, this house is day and night to where it was. We're getting pretty much siding, pretty much new porch amenities, stairwell, paint, trim, and it literally looks like a brand-new house with also window improvements as well. And this will hopefully continue as we get Foundation for Excellence dollars will be able to assist in doing more projects similar to this. So looking forward, challenges. Of course, challenges as a number of individuals know in this community and around the country is cost. Cost of supplies, labor, all those things are going up. What we're trying to do is put together a nice, a number of resources beyond just Foundation for Excellence to assist with that cost, hopefully working with Council of County and other foundations here locally to assist with our affordable housing initiative, but also figuring out the best timing to make sure those dollars that are at the county level, at the foundation level, match up well with our Foundation for Excellence dollars. As we talked about with CDBG and HUD funding, there are stipulations and requirements. We have to make sure that our dollars match these other dollars that we can leverage to fit hopefully the needs of the community, but put us in a position that we can leverage our Foundation for Excellence dollars to have the best housing that is possible. So opportunities. As we build hopefully more with Lisk and communicate in the community, we want to bring in more partners. We've been, I think we talked about in economic development how we've been working with our small contractors. We're trying to work with some of those small contractors to be small developers to assist them to do one house at a time as individuals. We're going to be trying to work with hopefully a group of them to do a partnership to build one house together and use that housing development as a quote unquote example of how they can collaborate to not only build that house, but hopefully bid on other housing development projects, working with our nonprofits and for-profit organizations, and hopefully create some small local entrepreneurs that are not just doing repair work on houses, but trying to be individuals that are doing development. So we're trying to hopefully work with pre-development and planning initiatives with Lisk. One of the things that has been a humongous plus for us as staff and the community is our pre-development funds that Lisk provides to work with some of our organizations. And that program provides up to pretty much a $50,000 forgivable grant slash loan that gives flexibility for, in this case, a number of our nonprofits that we've been working with, including some of our faith-based organizations, to do the research and development on a site to make sure that they're spending dollars in their preparation and planning that will assist them to implement what's feasible. The great thing about that program is the project does not go forward, Lisk has the ability to forgive that funding with that, with that program. That gives a lot of flexibility to a number of pretty much our faith-based organizations that we're working with right now. We have five of them. In particular, we're looking at doing affordable housing with, and a number of those projects are mixed-use development. And hopefully, there will be similar to the Creamery project, bringing additional, as I say, services beyond just housing at those locations. So as you're looking at this model, we're trying to also maximize space on our lots. And so what you're looking at is a model which we have pretty much on Rose Street, pretty much south of our location here, that pretty much has the capacity they have for units in it. So what you're looking at is a duplex on the front that has, of course, upstairs, second floor, main floor, and then it also has the possibility of having housing in the basement level as well. And then in the garage, you have housing above that. One thing we've been trying to do is moving the position of creating opportunity for individuals to not only get housing, but create financial stability for their family. So what we've been trying to do in preparation is show homeowners and individuals that not only can we assist you with getting housing, but get a housing that can assist you with additional cash flow to stabilize your family. So if you lived upstairs and you ran out the first floor and the basement and the garage, that would give you three streams of income coming into your house to not only assist you in paying your house note on this property, but would also assist you with additional cash flow to support your family. So that is one of our visions. Now, it hasn't happened yet, but that is what we're trying to initiate is creating economic opportunity in the, in the same framework of creating housing affordability for a lot of our families in the community. So hopefully through this effort that we're just getting started, this is just getting started, we'll be able to utilize and leverage the Foundation for Excellence dollars to not only create affordable housing, but also stabilize some families economically for their future and their children's future. Questions?
Thank you very much, Director Mitchell. I appreciate that. Questions for the Director from Commissioners? Commissioner Prado.
Director Mitchell, thanks for the presentation. That last example, you were talking about supplemental income and, you know, like in the above garage or in the basement or whatever, is that kind of referring to like the home share concept we've been talking about a little bit on and off?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to like, I guess this is a comment as much of a question, but I can't emphasize how, how much of a high-impact, a low resource impact that could make, you know, almost in a year.
Yes.
You know, because, you know, the real good example, if anybody wants to Google this, it's an Ann Arbor example. It's partnership with U of M. They've been doing this for a while. They basically work with like a local agency, like a senior services type agency. And it's almost like when you hear about like college dorm matching, right? So they find typically a senior, somebody who's about to age out of their house that needs support in their home. They find somebody who's maybe, you know, struggling to find a way to get into the housing market. They find, hey, are they both morning people? You know, is there any like major compatibility rifts that are going to be there? Match them together, and then all of a sudden that senior has somebody to help him with the chores, with the lawn, you know? And then that homeowner makes some supplemental income, and the person who's coming in there saves money. I mean, we're talking, you know, you get 100 people in this partnership, you're basically doing the equivalent of creating 200 housing opportunities because you're keeping the person in their home who wouldn't otherwise have been able to stay, and you're creating 100 extra opportunities for people who otherwise wouldn't have been able to get into the market. I think it's brilliant, and I know it's multifaceted, you know, because it's some things we have to do to make that compatible with our community, but I just think that's a, that would be a home run for the community almost, you know, really quickly. So I'm just kind of curious in how you, how long you think that might take us to get to that point or?
Well, we literally just started. And so hopefully we'll have a, let's say, ribbon-cutting ground, ribbon-cutting for that housing, like I said, down the street this month, no later than next month. But Commissioner Prado, you hit on it. It, it creates opportunities that aren't here, that, that are being done on the other side of the state, that are being productive, that leverages dollars for a homeowner, like you said, a senior, to create more income for their family and gives them more stabilization. And so the issue for us is we have to sell that to the community because that does create more density. And, you know, we have a lot of family that need a big yard, they need this and that, and that's great for some people, but not for everyone. And some people want this opportunity for not only stabilization of cash flow, but also setting up their family for the future. Because now grandmother's staying there, I can move one of my kids in the garage, a smaller space or the basement, and run out the other two spaces, and it's a, it's still not an economic burden on me to do that, to assist a family member, or assist my, my sister, who's also my same age, is older, she needs to be in the same house with me, but I need her in a different space than in my space. And that happens where, you know, a lot of family members have to take care of other family members, but guess what? That costs money. We're hopefully trying to position people to not only stabilize their housing situation, but also hopefully stabilize some of their financial situations at the same time. So we have to sell this to the community. Like you said, it looks great, it's a great example, Ann Arbor. We got to make sure Kalamazoo, our neighborhoods, accept that vision and that opportunity and take advantage of it.
Yeah, it's my understanding of that program, like basically started with like one and a half people. I mean, it was, it's, it's amazing. There's actually, there's a couple advocates too here that I've met with, with members of city administration staff before as well that are really knowledgeable, so I'd definitely encourage you to lean on those people because they've, they've gone to Ann Arbor and done homework and, you know, whatever. The second question I had for you as well is about that gap funding conversation. And I guess one of my concerns is you see all this development that's coming on, on the agenda and things that are on the final leg of work, and I assume that there's more on the cusp coming as well. But, you know, you see interest rates going up, you know, 6.7%. You know, you see, you know, labor costs, material costs still high. You know, they're coming down a little bit and they're fluctuating, but even still, it just seems like we're going to have to be particularly creative about gap financing for those people and making sure that the resources exist, that when, you know, potentially interest rates go up or we enter a recession. interest rates go up or we enter a recession, that those projects don't get stalled or, you know, end at the final leg.
Yes, yes. Pretty much what we have to do is find more partners to assist. That there's combinations of gap financing, that is, grant dollars and also loan dollars. How to leverage our dollars against someone else's dollars, you know, like Lisk, foundations, the county, to make some of these projects happen. That's how we're going to have to close the gap. This is not market-rate housing. This is affordable housing. And because it's affordable housing, you have to keep it, like you stated, into those parameters that work best for putting the right family into that type of housing.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Mitchell, for this. I have a question, one question for you, and then one for Zach.
Okay.
My question for you, you just mentioned a little bit about the affordability component. So, are all the other units, do they have to fall under that guideline, so we are helping low-to-moderate-income households, or me as owning this model, I can charge market rate if I want to?
Yeah, it depends on how we structure the program. So, and it'll probably come down to the funding source that would require that, you know, one or two units be affordable. I think this commission knows that the definition of affordable gets kind of interesting in Kalamazoo compared to the county. That's more of our trickiness than, than market rate, to be honest with you, is the definition of the state's affordability for Kalamazoo County is, doesn't line up to our residential numbers. So, we're trying to be creative there with leveraging hopefully more dollars to make individuals more enticed to make the affordable fit our parameters. So, hopefully, that was helpful.
Yep, thank you for that. And I'm going to steal your word, trickiness. I'm going to use that tonight. Thank you, Zach. I was wondering if you could give me like a tax credit syndication for dummies, real quick. What does that mean?
Here right now, okay. So, the, okay, so, the federal government will issue tax credits. So, these are financial mechanisms that allow people who have a tax liability to reduce that tax liability. So, oftentimes, pension funds, insurance, will buy tax credits, insurance companies will buy tax credits, high net worth individuals will. And so, what they do is they buy, they will come to us, and we will sell them a tax credit based on the spread. So, we may, I think right now, we're syndicating at about 85 cents on the dollar. And so, that institution will buy the tax credit, and so, that's the syndication. Basically, we send some poor individual out into the world to talk to these folks and say, hey, you know? And so, that's kind of what it is. The tax credits are awarded through, through their competitive process, either at a four or an eight, or a nine or four percent rate. And then, on the back end, we do the tax syndication through National Equity Fund.
And that's typically done with a Lytech deal, correct?
Yep. Lytech is probably the one you have the most exposure to, but there's also new market tax credits, which are used for, it can include housing, but it's also more driven towards economic development. There are historical tax credits, which generally aren't syndicated, they can be, it depends on the project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Director Mitchell, how are you?
I'm doing fine. How are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. So, great presentation, great information, especially when it comes around our housing. You talked about just making sure that you know the funding is there. I've heard funding and cost a lot within this presentation. Are you, and you're working for the Foundation for Excellence. Do we know how much they have allocated for affordable housing at all, or any idea?
You have a number, Mr. Brown?
I'll let the buddy man answer that first.
Thanks for stepping in.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Steve Brown, manager of the FFE. Commissioner Decker, do you mean all-time total for affordable housing investments from the FFE, or?
I'm thinking of what you're projecting possibly for next year.
So, next year is in draft budget phase. Don't hold me to the number, but I think it's about $1.5 million total. We'd have to look at the, how we define that term, affordable housing. So, I'd be, I'm really reluctant to say that.
Well, that's okay. I definitely don't want you to say anything that's incorrect. So, that's kind of like the budget area, kind of what we're thinking. Okay.
Yeah, and all-time FFE investments is now nearing, I believe, $12 million since the beginning of the foundation.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Antonio, also, sorry, Director Mitchell. So, I like what you're talking about when you talk about being able to use some of the land, especially partnering with certain organizations and being able to do the infill projects. So, if you had the funding, say, what would be your goal of how many infill houses, if you have that answer, that you would want to complete in a year?
Oh, in a year? Oh, that's not that easy.
Or maybe, okay, we'll say two years, so...
So, yeah, two years is better. So, it's not, to be realistic, when you're talking about affordable housing, if we're talking about single-family housing, if we could get up to, you know, 10 houses a year would be great, you know? So, and I'm talking about 10 at the minimum. I would love to be 20, 25 a year. We've estimated around 300 land bank vacant properties they have on their books. We would like to, of course, develop all of those. So, if we could develop all 300 of those in the next, you know, five to 10 years, that would be ideal. That would be my dream. It would be nice to, as Commissioner Prado stated, have that vision happen on a number of our properties, that we convince the community of the density need, and that the density need of this can not only be a benefit for individuals to have not only affordable housing, but assist individuals to stabilize themselves, not only housing-wise, but economically. That's what we're trying to utilize the Foundation for Excellence for, is not just affordable housing, but changing the economic future of that family and the children in that family, not only for now, but for the future. This is one tool to do that. How often we get to use it will be determined by not just the Foundation for Excellence, but the other partners that we're trying to bring to the table. The Foundation for Excellence is a gap financing component that we didn't have before, and we're very thankful to have that, because the housing we're doing now, we weren't able to do before Foundation Excellence came along. So, this tool may, the 1.5 that Mr. Brown brought up, may not seem a lot, but it leverages other dollars, and that's the key, that it puts us in a position that we come to the table with money. Sorry to say, the city doesn't come to the table with money that often to leverage other dollars. So, the Foundation for Excellence has been a blessing for our department, that it puts us in a position, not only on the economic development side, I gave a presentation a couple weeks ago on how it leverages dollars that way, but it also leverages dollars in the housing market as well. As the market goes up, hopefully, we'll be able to leverage more Foundation for Excellence dollars and identify the right partners to partner with. But, the dream is we want to build out all the infill vacant lots that the land bank owns. Can we do it in 10 years? That's the dream. But, it'll come down to the partners, which includes the Foundation for Excellence and how we leverage those dollars.
Thank you. So, you guys may have projects that are just kind of laying in wait.
Yes.
Again, from what I hear, lack of funding or whatnot. If the department had extra funding, we could have projects going on right now, because we're not waiting for the approval of the next budget for the next year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, so, so if the department has funding, let's say, like a piggy bank per se, that is sitting there, and a developer comes to you and says, "Director Mitchell, I want to build, you know, 10 houses on these lots that you have through the Kalamazoo Land Bank. We just need some extra funds. Can you help us with that?" Having that piggy bank is going to allow you guys to say yes, yes, yes to this project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you talked about the funding for the housing upkeep for the current residents. Can you talk a little bit more about that? I'm thinking that I understand against kind of what you showed us the picture of, of taking a house and giving them the funds and the assistance that they need to, again, beautify their house, which is then for beautifies the neighborhood.
Yes. I may have to lean on KNHS. Can you come up and talk about the repair program by chance? I'm not an expert in that, so...
Director Mitchell, if you'd be so kind, just I want to make sure that people who are watching recognize that actually, the city is not building houses, but we do that with our very, very valued partners. It just so happens that I don't think two of our partners who are here tonight expected to make any presentations. I know that Zach Baller from Lisk is one of those important partners that we couldn't do it without, but if you would just recognize, you know, we do have our partner, Foundation for Excellence, of course. Mr. Brown, you've come up, and just recognize Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services, just make sure people know who here is in the room.
Correct. And thank you, Mayor, for pointing it out. I think it's real important that the mayor said, we as a city do not do development. We partner with other entities, for-profit and nonprofit, to do. And so, as stated by the mayor for the public, the city does, is not a developer. It works with other entities, with funding sources like the Foundation for Excellence and others, including federal dollars and local dollars to assist with development projects. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Matt Melzark with KNHS. That particular example that was in the slideshow was a, used a lead abatement project that we had and leveraged those funds. So, with many of the grants we operate, there are match requirements, and the lead is a great example. You must bring at least 10% of your community funds to that project in order to even receive the funding. Well, that money has to come from somewhere, and this funding from the FFE has been a great example of bringing that match funds to make a much larger pot of money come to For a repair program.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, just jump in here for a second. There's also good news about lead funding as well. Mr. Melzark, I know that's not secret.
That is, that is great news, absolutely, yes. We just heard last week that, I believe, six, or I'm sorry, $4.6 million between lead and healthy homes funds we were just awarded to the community for the next four years.
And thank you very much. And I would say that that's based in large measure on the fact that we are successfully executing our current lead abatement program. And I appreciate KNHS, a valued and really critical partner in this work. So, thank you very much for that. Back to you, Commissioner Decker.
That's awesome. I heard about that last week too, so yay! And again, I think, you know, Mayor, that also talks to the point of how great our team is here, when they are putting together these grants and putting together these proposals and dotting the i's and crossing their t's and making sure that they have everything together and correct on those documents to send forward to get those grants and not have them rejected. So, thank you for that.
And I, if you'll indulge me in adding just one thing since I'm up here, I've been doing this for a long time, obviously, working with the city. It's not just the dollars that are new. I think that this is probably the most collaborative the city's been as far as partnering with agencies, doing that layering, that stacking. It really is a new day at the city, I think, as far as being a partner, working with the city. It feels really great. Not saying it didn't feel great in the past, but the money comes with staffing that had been great to work with. So, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that while I'm up here for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner Decker?
Yeah, I did have another question for Zach, if he has a moment. Hi, thank you.
Yes.
So, when you talked about the leveraging of the resources, you touched a little bit on the forgiveness and the failings of a project.
Yes.
In your time, there are, if you have a kind of an estimate, what do you think, how many projects do you think have failed? And in last couple years that have failed, and their grants and/or financing had to be forgiven?
So, this year, we will forgive one, because that's immediately in front of mind, and that was a faith-based group that had a building that had just been left to, the elements were too long. And so, it'll have to come down. And so, we felt it was appropriate at that point to, you're going to lose your building, it's probably a pretty good move not to make you repay the recoverable grant. In previous year, in last year, we didn't forgive any either. Previous to that, we had more forgivances, and that was because of our focus in the Lytech space. Oftentimes, property would be put under option. We don't have a lot of property within the city of Kalamazoo, so it's always kind of a fight. And it was decided that that plot of land was more attractive for a different use. And so, I believe that we were up to three here. And then, you know, I can't speak, but I can give you an aging report, if that helpful?
Thank you. I think that just kind of answers a question a little bit to say that, you know, when you get these fundings, there's not a lot of projects that don't make it to, and don't make it to the finish line. So, you know, I think that also shows what you guys do and everyone that's involved in this and how they're really trying to push this forward and to make sure that everybody has everything that they need to make sure that a project comes together.
Just to touch on that a little further, forgiveness is the last option. We do a lot of renegotiation structuring so that the funds do get to be recycled. That's ultimately what we want to see. We want to see them put back into the community after they've had a result. And so, if there's a project that is, as Commissioner Prado rightfully identified, everything is over budget, we will extend the repayment on that, or we may forgive in part, just to make sure that the performa will balance, so.
Thank you. I'm going to check and see if I have any more, just a minute. I think I'm all set.
Mr. Brown has a correction he wanted to make sure is on record.
Commissioners, thank you. Just to correct the record, the $1.5 million I made reference to is the 22 amended budget you'll see for ARPA. And then, next year, the proposed ARPA amount for affordable housing programs is $3 million. And those were moved from the FFE column, you could say, into the ARPA column. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. And to also be clear, the 2023 budget will come before you in December and then January, of course. So, these are, you know, proposed, not even at this point, proposed numbers, but this is where the final proposal document is now, so...
Okay, thank you for that. And just to clarify, when you say it's transferred from the FFE to ARPA funding, can you, just so I understand?
As a source. So, you know, each source is going to have limitations. So, the amount of money that's available from, say, from ARPA, and so, we're always trying to balance which uses are applied to which sources.
So, it would be the ARPA funds, is what you're saying?
That's currently what's being proposed, yeah.
Okay, to use the ARPA funds and not the FFE funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Other questions for Director Mitchell? Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yeah. I totally agree with Mr. Sarah.
I think they might, yeah.
Yeah, so, I am so impressed with your vision and your ability to utilize the resources we have and the great work that Zach is doing and the work that KNHS is doing, that Matt's doing over there. And I want to acknowledge the great work that the people up here have done. David Anderson's been doing this for a couple years, I think, now, doing forever. And Stephanie, with the great work that she's done over the years, and what Chris is doing over there, it can... And what Chris is doing over there, community homework is great. And I know that Kiana is working on the mortgages and getting people mortgages and stuff like that. That's just great. As a person who is from the dummy class, this is really a national problem. I mean, we're, we're dancing around here, people are working themselves to death, but I think it should be put into perspective that the, the HUD budget was cut by 75% when Ronald Reagan was president, and the money has never been restored. And as much as we hustle, we're never going to solve this problem until the federal government does what it's supposed to do. I mean, there have been times when the federal government intervened in the New Deal, in the War on Poverty, in the GI Bill of Rights. Those things made a great difference. So, I mean, part of our work has to be advocacy for the federal government to do what it's supposed to do. But, you know, I always think about, wow, can't we develop a comprehensive plan? I hear that the county report that was done by the Upjohn Institute is saying we need 10,000 new units and we're building 300 a year. Well, that's a fact, but do we, we don't have the resources to do that kind of thing that needs to be done. But I just hope that we, we can come closer and, I hear all the collaborations that are doing, and that's great. But it seems to me we do need a comprehensive plan. And, and I don't know how to get to that, but it just seems like that's an area that we need to work on here.
And I think I've talked to a number of Commissioners. I think one, one key factor that this commission needs to collaborate and discussion, how many units, you said 10,000? How many units does the city want to do? What is our cap? We can't do all 10,000. We don't have the capacity, we don't have the space, we don't have the funding. But what is, what is the wish of this commission, you know, is it 1,500, is it 3,000, is it 4,000? And accept that's our number. And, and let staff work to hit that number. Let staff work to identify the property to assist with making that number happen. But we have to accept as a city is that we are limited. We're limited on our capacity of land, we're limited on our capacity of funding. We love having the Foundation for Excellence, but it's, it's limited on what it can provide to us to assist. But US Commissioners have to say, this is where we want to go, this is why we want to get there, and we need staff to identify what the possibility of making that happen. The 300 I brought up is just 300 single-family lots. That's not including Martha family development in our downtown metro area that's happening. You know, we've identified at least 15 to 2,000 units of housing coming over the next five years in our downtown metro area. And units is pretty much our apartment, you know? It's not a single-family house. So we as a city, US Commissioners, have to give us some guidelines on what's, what's our limit? We, we can't, we as a city cannot save the whole county with affordable housing. That's not our mission. Our mission is to figure out what our capacity is and hit that goal. I ask you to give me that goal, and we'll try to hit it. So the challenge is for us as a city, as a community, is we cannot solve all the housing problems. We as a city have to accept that. But we do need to identify what is our mission, what do we want to achieve? And then we have to expect the rest of the county and the rest of the communities in this county to step up and assist with that gap. Let's choose what we want to do and let's do it. And we as staff will support you in that initiative.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. Commissioner Hess?
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor Cooney, and thank you, Director Mitchell, for, for this presentation. I wonder what, so all the development that's happening in Kalamazoo isn't necessarily affordable development?
Correct.
What does it do to affordability when we do build more market rate units, whether they be apartments or homes?
So pretty much it raises the value of properties, which raises the cost of development, which makes, you could say, our nonprofits in the city have to raise more money to close the gap with the gap financing. We need a balance, we understand that. Our, our blessing is that we have funding to tap into, to leverage. As was stated, the partnership and collaborations are there, the funding is always the issue that we always have a challenge with. The Foundation for Excellence has helped close that gap, the ARPA funds has helped close that gap a little bit more. My key is if we have a plan, we have a goal, then we can figure out how to leverage our dollars over a number of years to reach that goal. We need your assistance in identifying that. You, as a commission, approve the budget. You make the decision of where those dollars are going and why, of how we need to leverage those dollars to hit those goals and objectives. We make recommendations. Hopefully, our recommendations and your vision line up. If they don't, we need to figure out what that middle ground is so we can accomplish that goal. We also need your assistance in leveraging some of our foundations in the county and the state and the federal government to figure out what other dollars we can tap into in collaboration with the dollars that we already have. If we have a set goal and objective, it makes it a lot easier. So if you can nail down that number, it helps us better leverage the possibilities of hitting that number.
I think it needs to be realistic, but I think it could be, definitely be aggressive.
Correct.
What other projects, like the Creamery or the Lodge, are on the horizon? Are there any, is there anything that's right now on the horizon for that?
Yeah, the, the, I think the big one, and this is, I'm more excited probably than other folks. We're working with Mount Zion on a senior housing development, affordable mixed-use development project on the north side. I'm excited more about it because I've worked with some faith-based organizations in the past to do some development in other areas, housing development in other communities that I've been in. And it's been 20 years to this, almost to this day, as I talk to Pastor Moore about, of saying, US churches got a lot of property, can we please develop it? And today, they say yes. So I've been excited about working with a number of our faith-based organizations and developing a lot of their land that they have, that they do a great job of cutting grass, but I would like to build something on it. And we're finally moving in that direction. So I've, I've been thrilled this last year and a half to sit down with a number of our churches that are literally putting, as they say, their mission as part of our mission of creating housing resources that will leverage possibilities for families for years to come.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, you know, staying on the north side, you mentioned the Northside Tiny Homes Project. Is there a timeline on that? Has, are we moving on that yet or not?
Yeah, that's, that gets interesting. When we talk about stacking of dollars, that is a stacking of dollar project. It looks like they'll be hopefully breaking ground this spring, oh, not this spring, next spring, for that project. Site plans are done, it's just, like I said, stacking the dollars to make sure the project is feasible and hits the impact of the population they're trying to work with. And that, and the interesting thing about that, there's a phase one, phase two to that. So they're really kitty-corner developments. So hopefully, once this project starts next spring, then there'll be another kitty-corner project starting the following spring. So you'll have something hopefully 2023 and 2024.
Fantastic. And then lastly, you know, you mentioned interior and exterior repairs. How would a resident go about applying for, for such dollars?
So pretty much you can go to our website and go to Housing Development, and they'll be able to assist you to our staff, and they'll be able to pretty much ask you probably some questions or get some information from you to make sure you're getting into the right program, and also if there's some eligibility requirements for the program that they may refer you to.
Thank you. Could someone also call 311?
You can always call 311.
Can always call 311. Thank you, Director Mitchell.
Thank you. Commissioner Hess, other questions? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of wanted to piggyback off what Commissioner Hess said, and also what you said, Director, with the Northside Tiny Homes Project, again, you talk about the stacking of the financing. So I'm, again, I'm just thinking things and saying things out loud as I'm thinking them. But say, if you had funding in a piggybank, you would be able to assist them quicker?
Yes, if we had, I think what you're talking about, as we have talked about staff, if we had, as we call it, a line of credit dollars that we can leverage with other dollars, it would position us to move a lot faster. We're working with some of our nonprofit development projects and even some of our for-profit development projects, depending on how much affordable housing they would have in their project. So it would give us, as I say, a little bit more stability and a little bit quickness of hand of moving dollars towards making projects happen in sufficient and fast way.
Thank you.
Yes.
All set. Commissioner Decker? All right, great, thank you. So thanks for your great work, appreciate you coming in front of us here. This is an interesting situation because I do think that some years ago, we weren't able to talk about this kind of thing. It was all wishful thinking. And certainly, if you look at every one of these projects and, and the piece that the Foundation for Excellence is playing in making them possible or not, we certainly have to recognize the work that's happening there. So thank you, Mr. Brown, for being here, and, and I want to just recognize in general what a great, great opportunity that is for the city to do that work. And nonprofits have been around for a while, like Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services. That's, that's the workforce team right there that gets these projects done, that does the details, to get those things bid out. One thing we didn't mention, we were talking about the, the challenges for getting these things done, not just funding, is workforce. As a matter of fact, I would say workforce maybe should be at the top of that list. There are fewer and fewer people getting into the contracting business. And that, you can have all the money in the world, but if you do not have skilled people that are willing to bid on these projects and do that work, it's not going to get done, period. And I know that's a long-term play, and it's been a long-term play getting here with a lot of people getting out of the business, a lot of people retiring from business. So that's going to be a slow to come back and do that. But I think in the county, and you've got to remember, this housing plan is a countywide housing plan, not a city housing plan. So we're talking about number of units, that's, that's countywide, that even though it might be slow coming, large investments in pieces like this, foundational pieces, hopefully will help us over the long term. No other place has passed a countywide housing millage that's going to go on for eight years, seven more years now. Some more resources there when you talk about capital stack. The Career and Technical Education Center, $100 million building, philanthropy funded right out on the edge of 994 here to help build capacity and interest in participating in the trades as a darn good way to make a living and have a great life. And we're going to need to build that tied with our capacity to finance and build housing people who will do that work. So a lot of these pieces have to come together for that to happen. Just a little back, back to your question, Commissioner Hess, about new housing, I would say this, all housing at this point is good housing. Because what is driving our higher rents right now is lack of housing. It's an insufficient amount of housing which is making people bid up and be able to get higher rents. The more housing you have, that reduces the scarcity and allows some of that pressure to be relieved in terms of housing cost. So construction will help that. When you're talking about projects, you know, we've got, what, another 100 and 150 units being built right across the corner from here, us? That's a great thing, that's adding more housing. When you talked about the, the project you talked about with Mount Zion, that's great, but that's an application that has not been approved. That's LI-TEC, Low Income Housing Task Credits. The application date was today, so that application went in, won't find out for months whether it's awarded enough. Talking back to capital stack, there will be gaps. As a matter of fact, LI-TEC doesn't cover it all. But there is a project that was already awarded LI-TEC funding, and that's the senior housing project right down here in South Rose. So there's another great project that's actually quite a bit further along in that pipeline. As a matter of fact, we provided some additional gap funding for that project.
Correct.
Because once again, LI-TEC didn't cover it all the way that it was never intended to cover fully a project, but in this time of higher construction costs, doesn't. You know, there's additional gap funding that came from the county ARPA funds to help with that project. So there's partners all around the edges doing this work. Housing is being built in Kalamazoo County. And I know it's not enough, but I don't want to dismiss the idea that there, we are rolling, and I think we have a momentum that we can build on. And when we have that momentum, we can build staff capacity. We understand how projects work, we can keep our partners busy, whether it's KNHS and Lisk helping us with those. So I have great optimism for all of these various pieces coming together, including the work that we do, to help us, you know, improve our, our situation in Kalamazoo as it becomes, you know, when it comes to that so important resource, availability of housing. So thanks for focusing on that and your team that focuses on that work every single day. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Director Mitchell? Mayor Juretsma?
That concludes our presentation, Mr.
Thank you very much. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner Comments for the committee of the whole meeting. All right, seeing now at this point, Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk about, I think, the great job that our CPED department has been doing. Again, that also did great work under the direction of Assistant City Manager Hig, and now she's transferred that baton onto Director Mitchell. I think they're doing a great job. The consensus that I've heard just in this presentation and the individuals and the organizations that I've spoken with is, again, funding. And as Mayor, just as you said, it is not just a city-wide issue, you know, it's a county-wide issue, and we do have that millage. I also think that with our budget process coming, with our ARPA funds, you know, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really make a difference and to really put a dent into some of the, the lack of housing that just the city has. So I just want us all, you know, as a commission, to think about that. And Director Mitchell said it clear as day that, you know, they're definitely looking for direction on, on how many units we as a city want to build. So I think that that needs to be first and foremost on our minds as we go into this budget meetings and budget sessions and looking at where we're spending our dollars at. Because again, as you said, Mayor, the cost is high of everything. When you talk about, you know, getting the trade, you've got, again, we've got the trade center, we have the trade center coming, because right now, we don't have the workforce that is there to do what we need them to do. And that could also be another thing, when we're talking about funds and budgeting, is, you know, putting together a plan that talks about assisting individuals that are here within the city for workforce development and not just, you know, having it, you know, when they come and request it or need it, but really putting together a plan that says, hey, you're going to have this funding for five years, this is what you can do within the five years, and let's do this, let's do this together. There is, again, a lot of housing being built, and we need that. But we also want to make sure, I think it was stated, that affordable is different, is, is a different amount to different individuals. And we have to make sure that when we are building houses and doing the infill and doing the multi-units, that we are actually building houses that are affordable to not just have it be a market rate or what Mishna says or the AMI. We have to make sure that, that what we're building and what we're going to take a stand to is that it's really going to fit within a budget of someone that makes the minimum wage or just above. Because building housing that does not help the most vulnerable that are here right now and the ones that really need the housing also, it, we're just, we're just building houses, and we're not really affecting the change that we want within our city and within our community. And I know there are developers out there that want to do the right thing, they want to do the good thing, yes. It is always about the bottom line, unfortunately, and if they're able to make funds. But when you and developers and when the communities, when they invest in their people, then the city also is invested in because then we are also rising, not just as then the city also is invested in, because then we are also rising, not just as individuals, but also as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Anyone else? Commissioner Prado?
Sure. I was just gonna share something as well about roofing. I, I think as a community, we are woefully underinvesting in the amount of roofing that's needed in this community. And I'm not making a sales pitch for what I do during the day, we don't focus on roofing at all. But, you know, you think about what so many of the other organizations are looking to do in trying to preserve the home, the roof, and, you know, I'd second that with windows, but roofing primarily is fundamental to, you know, really, all the guts inside of a building. And you just looked at the example of, Commissioner Decker, you're talking about, you know, this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with the ARPA funding. You know, you look at Detroit, they got a $400 million pot for ARPA, right? They spent 30 million of that 400 million on an initiative to put 1,000 roofs on homes in the, in the city of Detroit. Game changer. A thousand people will have preservation. And I listened, I think it was NPR, I listened to the mayor of Detroit talk about why they did it, and he was like, look at, we put roofs on top of these homes, we can figure out how to get everything solved in the inside, but, you know, if you, if you go about it the other route, you're just gonna have all these homes that deteriorate and people who are kicked out of their homes. And, you know, I think that's just a reminder beyond just roofing, that if, if we're gonna solve something, we, we're gonna have to, to go big. You know, it's not, we're not gonna be able to do a mile wide and inch thick with everything and expect anything to really change. I don't know, that's, that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Other comments? All right, thank you so much, Commissioners. I just want to remind everybody that our business meeting starts in about a half an hour at 7 o'clock, and that will be broadcast as well. There will also be an opportunity for Commissioners to make comments at that meeting, as well as an opportunity for public comments, either from here in the chambers or by calling in. Appreciate everyone who attended, either here in the chambers or online. We adjourned.